Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Trustees dated Monday, April 28th of 2025 here at the Joliet Junior College Boardroom. At this time, I'd like to call to order. Karen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Bradrick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Gan?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee?
Present.
Trustee Stamboreski?
Present.
Trustee Queenie?
Present.
Trustee Bazinski?
Present.
Chairman, we have a quorum. And trustee Morales?
Here, present, and on time also.
Trustee Morales is requesting to attend the meeting virtually as she has an approved exception. Are there any objections? Trustee Morales will be allowed to attend the meeting virtually. At this point, item 1.2, I'd like to stand for a pledge of allegiance, and our outgoing student trustee, trustee Queenie, will lead us in the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have two public comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
We do. We have Aisha Shafiedin, who would like to speak regarding the outgoing trustee. And hang on just a second. As a reminder, Joliet Junior College welcomes public comments during its monthly board meetings. Per policy 015501, the purpose of this opportunity is to direct comments to the board, keeping in mind that comments should be in good taste and please demonstrate consideration for others. Please refrain from inappropriate, irrelevant, or disruptive comments. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Thank you for following this procedure.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, community members, and students. My name is Aisha Shafiedin, and you might recognize me. I was here a couple years back and made a public comment. But before I dive into the topic of my comment, I actually want to ask all of you to participate in a thought experiment very quickly, if you're not a college student, because I want you to take yourself back in time to your college days where you had deadlines coming up, essays due, and exams right around the corner. I'm sure that feeling of overwhelm and anxiety was probably building up and bubbling within you as you walked into each class nearing the end of the semester. The reason why I made you remember such horrible memories of anxiety-inducing times is because the comment that I'm going to make is actually in reference to the outgoing trustee, trustee Joshua Stamboreski. I made a couple comments a few years back highlighting the service that he had as a student trustee when I got to serve as the vice chair of the ICCV SAC alongside his service as chair. And during that time, I got to see him and his leadership, and I chose the word, multiple words, to describe how he meticulously served. And Joshua, this feels weird because I am speaking in third person, but I do want to congratulate you because being back here in a different relationship with you now, I've had a wonderful opportunity to witness the growth and the amount of dedication that you've given Joliet Junior Community College. It is truly spectacular that I have gotten to see you twice in different capacities. And the reason why I bring you all back to your college days is because Joshua is still a student at Lewis University. He is still pursuing his physics degree, and that is one of the most academically rigorous degrees that you can pursue, all while dedicating long hours, sacrificing time with family and friends, and taking care of himself sometimes, just so that he could give his best to this community. I just wanted to take a moment to highlight that because I think it's incredibly important to recognize the outgoing trustee, Joshua Stamboreski. I'm really grateful that I've gotten to witness your growth as a leader, but also as a partner. And I've also been really, really grateful to become a part of the JJC community through you, to see how wonderfully passionate that this community has been. So thank you. Thank you from my heart.
And do we have any other public comments?
We do not.
At this point, we're going to go into item 3. The Chair's requesting a closed session to discuss items under 2C1. So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gan?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, I'm seeking a motion to return to public session. So moved.
Second.
Item 5.1, the acknowledgement.
Wait, 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 wait.
Vote, 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 vote.
Hold on, we have to vote. Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gan?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales? Trustee Morales. Oh, she muted?
She's muted.
Sorry, sorry, yes, that's a yes. Okay, yes. Trustee Stamboreski?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now on item 5.1, the acknowledgment and accept receive or the results of the election. So move. Turn this over to Dr. Numul.
Chairman, thank you. I'm here to report the vote totals to be accurate. All seven counties have certified the results, and the winners are as follows. Nancy Garcia, Maureen Broderick, and Elaine Bottomley, each of whom will serve a six-year term. At this point, Chairman will need a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gan?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 6, recognition of board members leaving the board. 6.1, trustee Joshua Stamboreski. And at this time, I'd like to call to President and Dr. Amy Cuspa-Sims.
All right, Chairman Bazinski, and members of the board, and all the incredible people who are members of the JJC community, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge trustee Joshua Stamboreski. Josh's journey with JJC began, as you've heard and as many of you know, not just as a board member, but first as a student. Serving with distinction as a student trustee, even then, it was clear that Josh brought a rare combination of intelligence, integrity, and a deep sense of justice to everything he did. His leadership was not about titles, it was more about making a difference. Now, as you've heard, a physics major at Lewis University, Josh continues to exemplify the best of what JJC hopes to inspire in our students, a relentless pursuit of knowledge, a commitment to our community, and the courage to stand up for what is right and what is just. During his time on our Board of Trustees, Josh consistently brought thoughtful insight, principled leadership, and a genuine care for the future of this college and our students. His contributions have strengthened JJC in ways that will be felt for years to come. Joshua, we are tremendously grateful for your service, proud of your journey, and excited to see all that your very bright future holds. Thank you for all you have given to Joliet Junior College. As you rise from that seat for the very last time, potentially.
For now.
If Chairman has his way, I'd like to ask the JJC community to join me in a round of applause to thank our outgoing trustee, Joshua Stamboreski.
Can you join us for some pictures?
Sure, absolutely.
Good job.
So Josh, we have several tokens of our gratitude. We'll take some pictures here with the plaque that commemorates your years of service here at JJC. Chairman, will you join me for pictures, please?
Sorry, I throw off camera.
Up on another hand for Josh. Next, I've got some remarks here, and I'd like to also invite Dr. Amy Cuspa-Sims, there she is, to follow my remarks. It is my honor to recognize and thank our outgoing student trustee, Ryan Queenie, for their outstanding service to Joliet Junior College. Ryan has served with distinction, not only as a trustee, but as a powerful voice for students across the state. Their leadership in advancing the effort to bring bachelor's degrees to Illinois community colleges is just one example of their passion, their courage, and their commitment to building a stronger future for all students. At JJC, Ryan has indeed been a change-maker, leading the Pride Alliance Club, contributing to Active Minds, and working tirelessly to create a more inclusive, supportive campus for everyone. And through it all, through it all, Ryan has led with compassion, empathy, and an unwavering sense of justice. As a human services major and a dedicated employee of the county health department, Ryan already embodies the heart of service and advocacy that we strive to nurture here at JJC. Ryan, we are incredibly grateful for your voice, for your leadership, and the compassion you have brought to every space you have occupied here at JJC. And you leave behind an incredible legacy of inclusion, of humanity, and of kindness. Ryan Queenie, thank you for all you have done and all you will continue to do. And I ask college community to join me in the first of what will be two rounds of applause for our outgoing student trustee, Ryan Queenie.
I have to stand here while Dr. Cuspa-Sims embarrasses you.
You do pictures first. No? I can embarrass. All right. You stole some of my key talking points. What am I going to do with you? All right, well, good evening, Chairperson Bazinski, members of the board, administrators, colleagues, student leaders, I see you out there, and our guests. I would like to thank you for the honor of helping with the transition between our student trustees from year to year. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Amy Cuspa-Sims, and I am the Director of Student Activities, and my pronouns are she/her/hers. Before I share my thoughts on the outgoing and incoming student trustees, I would like to give you a little glimpse of what we observed in student activities this year amongst our student leaders. Our student leaders are truly remarkable. This past year, the social and political climate brought forth many opinions, feelings, and actions, both locally and nationally. The level of government, the level of engagement our student leaders just demonstrated here at the Board of Trustees meetings was only a glimpse of what happens across campus every day. What I observed repeatedly this year was the JJC core values. They are amplified by our student leaders. The more they engage in creating and supporting spaces in a welcoming atmosphere at JJC, the more those values grew within each and every one of them, and I hope those values stay with them beyond JJC as well. Dr. Numul is an expression of my gratitude and the end of the students. Thank you for sharing your messages of support and inclusion on our campus. The students have heard you say often, "I am not afraid," and they carry that message with them. Together, JJC is fostering future leaders for all industries and all communities. This year's outgoing student trustee is a reflection of the spirit of the JJC leadership that thrives on our campus. On behalf of the JJC community, I would like to thank Ryan Queenie for their service and support of their service during the 2024-2025 academic year. This past year, Ryan led the way in raising awareness about the Illinois Community College baccalaureate degrees to students throughout the state, especially here at JJC, where it is evident that Ryan's outreach helped the JJC become the leader. It was in student data collection on this topic. I also had the opportunity to travel with Ryan this year, and Ryan is a fantastic travel buddy. I don't know who was taking care of who. All right, I'm just saying. But it was a wonderful experience for me, and Ryan seized every opportunity to network, to introduce me to people, to learn, and to think of creative ways that whatever they learned, they could apply back as quickly as possible. Beyond their actions, though, is a heart of gold. A few weeks ago, Dr. Numul mentioned that each of our student trustees brought something different to the position, and Ryan's contribution was kindness. So as I reflected myself, and I could not find the words, I went to my bookshelf and found my copy of All About Love by Bell Books. And I couldn't find a quote, I couldn't find a quote either, but in the book, she talks about love in ourselves, love in youth, love in life, love with our partners, love in spirituality, and love in community. Ryan is a perfect example of love and community, showing us all patience, grace, kindness, and love each and every day. Ryan, thank you for your service.
Hey, Ryan, we also have a few gifts for you and a plaque to commemorate your incredible service to Joliet Junior College. We'd like to take some pictures.
Item number 7, the adjournment of the old board. At this point, I'm calling for a motion to adjourn the board.
Second.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gan?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 8, the new student trustee appointment, Dr. Numul and Dr. Amy Cuspa-Sims.
That's right. Chairman, thank you. This one, I'm going to toss over to Dr. Amy Cuspa-Sims to say a few words about our incoming student trustee.
So I also have the honor of welcoming our new student trustee, Brenton Bishop. As a side note, Brenton was in the Student Activities office about a year ago and came in with a plan, a document, many pages, which was emailed to me and is still in my email. And at that moment, I think I took a deep breath and said, "We need to talk about this." But since then, Brenton has been highly engaged in his academics, his future career plans, and many aspects of campus life. Brenton obtained his GED from JJC's Department of Adult Education and Literacy in October 2023, and began taking credited courses in January 2023, 2024. We were working on that. He received a state certification as a CNA in May 2024. Brenton's academic goal is to obtain an AAS in nursing from JJC, a BSN from the University of St. Francis, and continue their education to the doctoral level in hopes of opening a public health clinic one day. Brenton started getting involved on campus in fall of 2024 and has served as the president of Pride Alliance, been a member of student government, participated in Disability Awareness Club, and also averages about 18,000 steps a day. So look out, walking wolves.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Brenton is currently a JJC Health and Public Services student employee and has worked as a patient care technician at Edwards Hospital over the past year. As a fun fact, in addition to their impressive steps per day, Brenton also plays the violin. Congratulations on this new role, and Brenton, I look forward to working with you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Brenton Bishop up to the podium to join me along with Maureen Broderick, Nancy Garcia, and Elaine Bottomley. I'll read a few lines and then have you recite those lines back to me. Ready to go? Following is the oath of office for JJC trustees. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office as a member of the Board of Trustees.
Of the office as a member of the Board of Trustees.
Of Joliet Junior College, Illinois Community College District 525.
Of Joliet Junior College, Illinois Community College District 525.
According to the best of my ability.
To the JJC community, I welcome four new trustees for the Board of JJC Board of Trustees.
How about a hand? Trustees, we'll need you to sign the oath that's in front of you, and once you do that, you're welcome to take your seats.
President requests a roll call. Karen, can you call the roll, please?
Here.
Trustee Bradrick?
Present.
Trustee Bazinski?
Here.
Trustee Garcia-Gan?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Stamboreski?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 8, the new student trustee appointment, Dr. Numul and Dr. Amy Cuspa-Sims.
That's right. Chairman, thank you. This one, I'm going to toss over to Dr. Amy Cuspa-Sims to say a few words about our incoming student trustee.
All right. So I also have the honor of welcoming our new student trustee, Brenton Bishop. As a side note, Brenton was in the Student Activities office about a year ago and came in with a plan, a document, many pages, which was emailed to me and is still in my email. And at that moment, I think I took a deep breath and said, "We need to talk about this." But since then, Brenton has been highly engaged in his academics, his future career plans, and many aspects of campus life. Brenton obtained his GED from JJC's Department of Adult Education and Literacy in October 2023, and began taking accredited courses in January 2023, 2024. We were working on that. He received a state certification as a CNA in May 2024. Brenton's academic goal is to obtain an AAS in nursing from JJC, a BSN from the University of St. Francis, and continue their education to the doctoral level in hopes of opening a public health clinic one day. Brenton started getting involved on campus in fall of 2024 and has served as the president of Pride Alliance, been a member of student government, participated in disability awareness club, and also averages about 18,000 steps a day. So look out, walking wolves.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Brenton is currently a JJC Health and Public Services student employee and has worked as a patient care technician at Edwards Hospital over the past year. As a fun fact, in addition to their impressive steps per day, Brenton also plays the violin. Congratulations on this new role, and Brenton, I look forward to working with you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Brenton Bishop up to the podium to join me along with Maureen Broderick, Nancy Garcia, and Elaine Bottomley.
As a point of order, Trustee Broderick cannot serve as the chairman pursuant to the policy, Board Policy 01.10.00, as she is currently not in good standing.
I am aware of the policy. However, I have a letter from the Director of the ICCTA, Jim Reed. If the Secretary would like to pass this out, as a general rule, policies are intended to govern future conduct and behavior. They should not be used to punish or penalize actions. Are you going to hand this out for everyone? Punish or penalize actions that occurred before the policy was in effect. Applying a policy retroactively could be seen as unfair and could violate principles of due process and fairness. That's what I'm sharing out of his email. I am aware of the policy 1.10.00, officers of the Board, and the new addition of a member in good standing, and how it will be used against Maureen Broderick to run for executive position. However, the censures are not retroactive. They are currently in litigation and are being used specifically to keep her from being eligible and in violation of her due process and fairness. I would also like to note that Vice Chair Alicia Morales attended the Democratic Caucus and lost the bid to be slated on the ballot. Despite this, she filed the paperwork particularly in an intent to be a write-in candidate where she must swear that she is eligible under the law.
There is no guarantee on what's going on here.
Can I finish my comment? Where she swore to be eligible under the law to run for office. However, she knew she was ineligible due to her loss at the caucus, and that false swearing is, that is considered false swearing, perjury, or election fraud, and is punishable by a Class C misdemeanor under Illinois 10 ILCS 5/743, sore loser law. This behavior shows her character and lack of respect for laws that govern the elected positions of this, of the elected positions and laws that govern this college. This is the same behavior she has exhibited on this board and why Maureen and I have filed the lawsuit. The persistent attacks on Maureen and I for admonishing fellow trustees, legal counsel, and the administration for violating policies, contracts, the Illinois Open Meetings Act, as well as the Illinois Public Community College Act, and rules governing the legal profession of judiciary in Illinois. These attacks have been anything but civil or just, and it was our duty to file a lawsuit to confront and stop the abuse of power and lack of respect for laws governing elected officials and the college. The participation and cooperation in covering up these egregious actions by my fellow board members is why I cannot vote for any of the trustees in good conscience, besides Maureen Broderick, who has taken a stance against these behaviors, and Elaine Bottomley, as she was not here to participate. Thank you.
I have one comment. I have one comment. In regards to the, in the Supreme Court, under Houston Community College versus Wilson, the act that the Supreme Court ruled was in favor of the trustee, the censure was to discharge their public duties, and that's what the censure should not be doing. It sets a precedence on public boards and censures. That court case, that court case is the one that established where trustees should not be censured for removing them from any elected positions, of board positions.
And can I make a comment? The beginning of Trustee Lee's comment was incorrect. She has been censured after the policy was in place.
However, know that I continue to say.
Five minutes, stop. So, based on that, the policy still exists that she's a trustee that is not in good standing because she's been censured after the policy was created.
Those retaliatory actions created against Maureen are all, and those censures were also a violation of her due process because there's no evidence and she had no opportunity to defend herself against allegations that had no evidence, no witnesses, which is why they are in litigation. So again, they still do not stand.
Policy 01.10.00 was last reviewed and approved by this board in December of 2024. Trustee Broderick was censured most recently in March of 2025.
For things that happened eight months before that, roughly. Right. It was retaliatory from things that had happened.
In accordance with what those two censures were, according to when I've talked to the State Board of Elections and to the ICCTA and ICCB, those are my duties, to talk about the budget and to talk publicly, which I have, that I did not approve of the contract with the President. So those were censures that will be definitely removed because of the fact that they do not relate to anything of a violation. Those are specific duties that you are now taking away from me when that board did that. So that's where the Houston Community College versus Wilson will come into play.
That action has already been taken. The board has made its decision. I think we're ready.
And the court will have its decision.
Brian, thank you. Just reclaiming the floor for a second. Brian, can we get a look at the final slate, please? So, Trustee Morales.
As I have, is, Trustee Bozinski was nominated by Trustee Morales.
Right.
Trustee Broderick was nominated by Trustee Lee. I don't believe that the board should vote on that, based on my legal analysis and my opinion. Trustee Bottomley was nominated by Trustee Broderick, and Trustee Garcia nominated herself.
Okay. So we need, if there are no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close nominations for Chair of the Board.
Second.
Second.
And we need a roll call vote.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Bottomley.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Trustee Morales has nominated Trustee Bozinski for the Office of Chair of the Board. Karen, we need a roll call vote for that nomination.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Bottomley.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
No.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Pass.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia.
Yes.
Motion carries.
She's going to attack us the entire time and harass us.
Brian needs some guidance here. Go ahead.
Oh, at this point, I think you can ask for the motion to approve.
Okay. At this point, the President will entertain a motion to approve Trustee Jim Bozinski as Chair of the Board of Trustees, looking for a first and a second.
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 Looks like we got a motion by Trustee Garcia and a second by Trustee Bottomley. And Karen, at this point, I'll call for a roll call vote for approval of the Chair.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Bottomley.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
No.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Karen, thank you. That concludes 11.1, election of the Chair. At this point, the floor is now open for nominations for the Office of Vice Chair of the Board.
I'd like to nominate Alicia Morales.
I'd like to nominate Diane Harris.
I will nominate Garcia again. Good luck. You are much fairer than both of them.
You don't have election fraud.
Yeah.
I motion to close it.
If there are no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close nominations for Vice Chair of the Board. Need a first and a second.
I made the motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Broderick, second by Trustee Harris. Karen, we need a roll call vote for closing nominations.
Trustee Broderick.
Aye.
Trustee Harris.
Yeah.
Trustee Bottomley.
Yes.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Karen. At this point, Trustee Jim Bozinski has nominated Trustee Alicia Morales for the Office of Vice Chair of the Board. Karen, we need a roll call vote.
Before we take a roll call, can we have some brief discussion, please?
Yes.
So I'm honored, Jim, by your intention to nominate me again. However, I have given this a very careful thought, and I believe it's the right time to help elevate other leadership voices. As we continue to grow, I believe it's also our responsibility to create space for emerging leadership. I'd also like to nominate Secretary, former Secretary and now trustee Nancy Garcia again as Vice Chair, as she has honorably served this board for six years, and she recently won her reelection for another six years, and she was also the top vote getter. Nancy has shown tremendously, has grown tremendously in her role, and this step will strengthen our succession planning and diversity and diversify our leadership. I am confident she'll bring valuable perspective to the leadership team. I remain fully engaged in supporting the Board's work and look forward to continuing to serve alongside all of you and will support her as a member and a peer. Seth, I will not accept the nomination today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Morales. Brian, do we need an action on that?
No, if she's declining the nomination, we can proceed to the next.
I would like, since we are under brief discussions, and she asked for a brief discussion, I would just like to note that despite that Vice Chair Morales had, you know, engaged in false swearing, perjury, and election fraud, he still nominated her as Vice Chair because he does not care, because this is the behavior that he wants to continue and the collusion that has been going on on the board.
There is no collusion, and that's not any reason why I did not accept it, and nothing of what you're saying is valid or true.
It is very valid. You ran as a write-in candidate, Alicia. They didn't. No. Then why didn't you win?
Can we go back, point of order?
Reclaiming the floor.
We'll get back to the next item, please.
So at this time, with Trustee Morales declining the nomination, we move on to the second name. Trustee Harris has nominated herself for the Office of Vice Chair, and Karen, we will need a roll call vote for that.
Trustee Bottomley.
No.
Trustee Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
No.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Morales.
No.
Trustee Bishop.
Abstain.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Karen. At this point, trustee, trustees, Michelle Lee, we take these together, right, Brian?
I don't think, Trustee Morales made her motion to nominate after nominations have been closed, therefore it's of no.
Oh, got it. Okay. All right. Noted. Trustee Michelle Lee has nominated Trustee Nancy Garcia for the Office of Vice Chair of the Board. Karen, we'll need a roll call vote for this one.
Trustee Bottomley.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
No.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
No.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, Karen, thank you. That concludes 11.2 on the agenda, election of a Vice Chair. Agenda item 11.3, election of a Secretary. At this point, the floor is now open for nominations for the Office of Secretary of the Board.
I would like to nominate Trustee Alicia Morales for the role of Secretary.
I would like to nominate Elaine Bottomley. Second. Oh, do we need a second?
No.
If there are no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close nominations for Secretary of the Board.
Second.
Karen, we need a roll call for closing nominations.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Bottomley.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Karen, thank you. Trustee Nancy Garcia has nominated Trustee Alicia Morales for the Office of Secretary of the Board. Karen, we'll need a roll call vote.
Trustee Bottomley.
No.
Trustee Broderick.
No.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Abstain.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop.
Abstain.
Motion fails. It's a tie.
All right, thank you, Karen. Trustee Maureen Broderick has nominated Trustee Elaine Bottomley for the Office of Secretary of the Board. Karen will need a roll call vote.
Trustee Bottomley.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
No.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Abstain.
Trustee Bishop.
Abstain.
Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes section 11.3. Chairman, that leaves you for number 12. At this point.
I was done. We have to motion for it, approve it.
We not motion for the approval of the Secretary?
We failed to do the motion for approval of the Vice Chair and of the Secretary.
I motion to approve Trustee Garcia as Vice Chair.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Bottomley.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
No.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Did you say yeah?
No. I motion, I got to there, but I told us that I can't vote on anyone that isn't Maureen and Bottomley, so.
Got it.
No. Keeping to my word.
So she's a no.
Pass. Correct. Okay. Trustee Morales.
The vote we're taking is to approve Vice Chair, Nancy as Vice Chair.
Correct.
Yes, then my vote is a yes.
Trustee Bishop. Motion carries.
Now we need to make the motion to approve Trustee Bottomley to be Secretary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Bottomley.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Bozinski.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Bishop. Motion carries.
Thank you, Karen. All right, Chairman, now officially back to you.
All right, at this time, request a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. We're adjourned.